Welcome everybody today to our second meeting of the year 2020 for the trustees of Library at Daly City. I'd like to call this meeting to order at six o'clock. Please stand for pledge of allegiance.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, indivisible, with original justice.
Okay, thank you for that. Roll call, please.
Trustee Doss.
President.
Trustee Santos.
President.
Vice President Fauqua.
Here.
We have a call.
Okay. We'd like to excuse some of our fellow trustees, trustees due to family emergency. Okay, I'd like to motion and approve the agenda for tonight. Anybody to second?
I second.
Motion carries. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Okay. Directors report.
Good evening, Vice President Fauqua, members of the commission. Our first item is a carryover from our last discussion. I believe it was at the request of Vice President Fauqua, that we reconvene as many commissioners in Daly City as possible, preferably on a Saturday for Brown Act training and a bit of a commissioner's social and probably Roberts' Rules of Order. So I conveyed that message and there is one in the works. We do not have a date set yet. They're shooting for a Saturday in April.
Okay.
I wish I had more to report. For those of you who are not familiar with the concept, this is something the city does occasionally, as we have a turnover in commissioners. And in fact, we have an entire new commission since we've done our last one. It's a Saturday where the city attorney reviews the basics of the Brown Act that governs all, governs public meetings in California. And we also do a little bit of a review of Roberts' Rules of Order. And it's also an excellent opportunity for commissioners to come together at the same time in the same place, which under normal circumstances doesn't happen because you'll have your separate meeting time. So I would suggest we carry this forward and hopefully in March, or if not sooner, we'll have a date to share with you. And as soon as I have a date, we'll share it by email so you can put it on your calendars. But we're looking hopefully at a Saturday in April.
Okay.
That's a perfect segue to our next agenda item is a special joint meeting with Recreation Commission. Again, if I'm not mistaken, this was Vice President Fauqua's request. It's something we'd very much like to do. And what we'd like to spend a minute or two talking about is the timing of that and maybe some content for discussion. Probably the best opportunity would be later in the spring and perhaps focus the meeting on summer activities that both the library and recreation do and some of the activities we do jointly. But I'm certainly open to suggestions. If there's a different time that you think would be better, we can, we can do that. I'll be meeting with the Recreation Commission next Tuesday night. And whatever we suggest tonight, I'll bring forward to them.
So when you may say, is it too early to set a date?
It's, I don't think it's.
I would love to hear, because I wasn't here at the last meeting, what just your thinking was. I mean, I think it's a brilliant idea, but.
And it has, we have done it before. And I think.
What were you thinking?
Do you want to?
Sure, you can chime in.
Okay, well, I'll let you start, then I'll chime in.
So when we had the commissioner get together, the Christmas party, and I was able to introduce to some of the board members, the commissioners from the library, and it kind of sparked me, I'm like, hey, we actually have one director.
Right.
You know, Mr. Curran, and we're in contention somehow, we're together. I would like to see where their, what their plan is, what our expectations, and then to see what we can come together. Maybe we both need each other. And the bottom of it, to see how the separation of the budget is.
Cool. I was, I was thinking, I was like, oh, I wonder if she's, but I totally, yeah, I like the idea.
So, you know, what can we benefit from, from both, from both ends? Hey, feel free to see, I mean, we can talk about the date and the content of the.
Yeah, I was just curious, because I was like, hmm, I just didn't know what you were thinking. But I love the idea of like, doing it soon, I think around, I know you're going to give us the city budget timeline in a little bit, but it would be great to have some shared conversation around the priorities and stuff. I'm also curious around, I think, a really cool idea, since we're ahead of spring, would be to think about some spring activities to do together, since a lot of the recreational stuff is, like, a lot of them occur at the same place as the libraries. And so I love it. I think March would be really cool, but if April is more possible.
What do you think?
Yeah, I think it's, I appreciate the idea, because then it allows us to really collaborate with other commissions. So, and I've been like, I think I've been, I've been thinking of like collaborating with other commissions, so.
Yeah.
I think some of, some of the things to consider as we go forward with this is, is the venue. Certainly, we can have it in this room, and we have had it before. We've also had meetings offsite, both at the, at Ceremony Library Community Room and, and in the training room here. It's, sometimes that's more conducive for brainstorming, less, less formal agenda, but more brainstorming. And you can cover things like, you know, maybe long-term strategic goals for the department. But I will certainly defer to the Recreation Commission and the Library Board of Trustees to determine that. You know, the argument for being in here, it's, it's nice for the transparency for the community to see what's happening. But the reality is, in my experience, the discussions tend to be a little bit more deeper and, what's the word I'm looking for? It becomes a little bit more.
It's more like interaction. You know, it would be, we're not going to jump into the budgets right away.
So sometimes it's hard to have that kind of dialogue in this setting, as with the two groups together. We have done it, but it, again, I'll defer.
Yeah.
Yes. In terms of like, the scheduling for it, like, would it be a special meeting?
It would have to be, it would have to be a special joint meeting of the two commissioners, the Recreation Commission and the trustees. Yeah, and again, that would, that would be up to you, if you wanted to have that instead of a regular meeting, or in addition to either, either one, it's fine. You get paid the same either way.
Okay. It would be good if we have a president to have her feedback to on the matter, but just to, to get to just throw, you know, some of the ideas about it. But I would love to hear from some of the trustees and see what they would think, especially Madam President. But I think we need to set the date.
Yes. I do like the idea on my end, so it's a yes for me.
What do you guys, I think March is a little too early.
It could be.
And I know spring is out of the door.
Oh, that is.
So maybe like a summer kickoff?
Yeah.
April and May would both work, I think, for that. May, May might be better for, for the summer kickoff. Everything should be pretty.
Yes. So April sounds really good.
Can we set like a possible April date, and then we'll really solidify for May?
Yeah. Okay. Are we looking at a weekday or a weekend? Does it have to be a weekday?
Well, no, it doesn't. It's, it's your preference. And whatever you guys, what your preference is, I will share with Recreation Commission a week from tonight and see how they react to it. It does not have to be a weeknight. It could be a weekend.
Okay, I am open to like a Saturday morning.
A Saturday morning, like for a Saturday brunch.
It could be social, too.
Like after Easter, because it's Easter. So the 25th, like the end of February?
25th or the 18th, or during the week I'm open to. I'm just, I don't know what folks are preferring.
I think a weekend would be good.
Okay. So should we shoot for the 25th?
Okay.
April 25th?
Yes. Just to have a tentative date.
Okay, oh, we need a proposed time and location.
Yeah.
And then maybe a second date.
In May?
Oh, that would be great, too.
Right.
So maybe April 4th and April 25th?
Or May 4th? Oh, no, April, yeah, April 4th and the 25th.
I might be out of town on April 4th.
Oh, well, then that's.
Not an option.
Or that's spring, it's like spring break.
It's spring break.
So the 18th and the 25th, then? Okay.
Okay.
I won't be out of town on 18th.
How about May, May 2nd?
Okay, so let's do May 2nd. 25th and May 2nd.
Yeah.
Okay. Okay.
Okay.
And then all other details will be determined later on.
You said the time.
Then, I was.
A time and a location.
Can we use Boys and Girls Club on Duluth, on Martin? They have a full kitchen there. They have a full kitchen and big space, a lot of parking.
Or even can we meet in one of the libraries, even make use of the?
I can check the availability.
Okay. Any of the libraries and the Boys and Girls Club on Martin Street will be good, if there's availability.
One of the meeting rooms with inside the Bay Shore Community.
Yes, they have a big room on the top, and open up the doors.
And now a time, maybe?
Say nine.
Nine, 10?
Nine.
Nine.
AM?
Yes.
10, maybe 10, 10.
10.
It is Saturday.
It is Saturday, yes.
Yeah, people got to sleep in. Okay, that's it.
Okay, I will bring that forward to the Recreation Commission meeting one week from tonight. Excuse me for. Something in this room is not agreeing with my allergies. The next item is the city budget timeline. And again, this was something we carried forward from last month. And I'm sad to say that I don't have a firm timeline yet. They're still working on it in the Finance Department, and it's scheduling, they do this outside the regular city council meetings. So getting the city councils' schedule squared away in the coming months hasn't been set yet. But if they follow the historic pattern, there will be an opportunity for public comment at a couple of stops along the way. And at some point, again, assuming, we have a new finance director, so it may be slightly different than in the past. But in the past, every department presented their proposed budget to the city council at a public meeting. Certainly, as soon as I get that date, I'll, I'll let you know. And then there's, they digest all, they don't make any decisions at those meetings. But then there will be another meeting where they actually publicly adopt the budget, and that's typically in May. Our fiscal year, to remind everybody, in Daly City, fiscal year starts July 1 and goes through June 30. So our next fiscal year will be July 1, 2020, going through June 30, 2021. Typically, Daly City, for as long as I've been here, has adopted a two-year budget. There has been some talk this year about possibly doing a one-year budget, which would be the first time that's happened in a long, long time. It's not.
Is that good or bad?
Cities, cities our size do it both ways. And I, I think that the changes tend to be fairly incremental, which is why a lot of cities do, because it's a lot of work putting the budget together, do it every two years. I think with so much change on the horizon, both on the national level and locally here, there might, may be some value to looking at a one-year budget and then seeing where we are the following July. But as far as I know, that decision has not been made.
And is May because of the, like, the, because I know the governor's budget gets finalized in May, too. But is that part of the timeline, that we do the vote in May on like the final budget, or just curious?
It's usually the city council will hear the final budget in May. It has been adopted both in May and it has been adopted in June. But it's got to be, it's got to be in place by July 1.
And do you have like a range of historically when we've had the first read of the budget? Does it usually come in like March or April?
A range?
Yeah, like historically, like in the timeline, when have we had the first read in past budget?
Usually by March-ish. So it should be coming fairly soon. And, and for those of you who don't know, the city council did do a five-hour budget priorities session on a Saturday. When was that? Back in, was it in January? It was in, in January. So they've already got, let me, let me back up a step. So the beginning of the process, each department had to present a budget, which really had its basis in, in kind of a snapshot of where we are today, with, with a little room for growth, a cap of 3% for projected growth. On top of that, at the direction of the trustees, we put in a supplemental request to increase staffing so that we would have the ability to open the Bay Shore Library and the John Daly Library five days a week. So, so the council was taking, not just from us, but from every department, reviewing both the budgets, the supplemental requests, like the one we turned in, and long-term revenue forecasts. Because, you know, the thing, the cities, unlike our federal government, the cities have to adopt a balanced budget. We can't adopt a deficit budget. So they want to make sure the revenues are going to support whatever the final proposed budget turns out to be.
So when our department proposed our budget and is presented to, before it's presented to the city council, do we have to look at it together before?
We review.
Before you guys submit it?
I think, I think we took your direction and turned it into, to a supplemental request. Yeah, the budget process, it's a little bit like watching paint dry. It's, it's a lot of numbers and.
I hate that.
And the one good thing about the coming fiscal year compared to just about every fiscal year in the last 10 years.
Bless you.
In, in most of the last 10 years that we've done this, we've always looked at cuts. And that's how, you know, we saw, not just in, in library reductions that have shrunk 40% over, over the last 10, 12 years. Recreation actually shrunk more. Recreation shrunk by 44%. Those two divisions of the city's budget were reduced more than any other department. So I think there's a lot of people sympathetic in that, share your, your view that would be nice to have some restoration. We're, we're not swimming in money yet, so I don't know how probable all of our requests for restoration are. But we're certainly asking and remaining hopeful.
Okay.
Thank you.
Okay, trustees report. So one of the things that, thank you, we're here, the things that, reading with the trustees. So we would like to push back the date, because we were supposed to do it this Thursday. And I'm not sure if we're fully prepared for it. We need a flyer, and we need to reset a date, if that's possible.
Okay.
So let's check our calendar. And then we can submit that date right now to.
What Thursday?
Thursday, yes. So shoot it for March, because February is gone. There's March 5th, 12th, 19, 26.
Any of those?
I'm free for any of those, except for the 19th, because that's my birthday. So.
But St. Joseph's Day.
March 19th.
Oh, okay. When is St. Patrick's?
17th.
That's the 17th.
Oh, not that week. Then you guys want to do the 12th?
The 12th could be good.
Yep. Okay, so reading with the trustees.
I was gonna. 4:00 PM.
4:00 PM.
You guys do lunch, right?
Yeah.
Yeah?
11:00 in the, in the morning?
Yeah, in the morning.
Okay, so. Okay. Do you guys want to move it to the 5th?
Sure. That's fine.
Okay, so the 5th, there it is, March 5th.
4:00 PM at Bay Shore.
4:00 PM at Bay Shore, reading with the trustees. So it'll be nice if we have a flyer before. Oh, the, I can bring it to the school. They can, you can just shoot me the email, and I can forward it to the superintendent, and then they can distribute it out in any way they can.
Sounds good.
Okay, till we're all available. So we'll just let Madam President to know that she wanted us to pick the date.
Yes. And that's what we wanted.
Yes, okay. Item number five, advocacy. So. And so creating awareness. Anybody?
I went to Westlake last month, just to check in. But also, since I've been a trustee, I haven't taken out a book. So I just wanted to like check the selection and stuff. Actually really appreciate that branch. The young adult selection is big, and it does make me curious around how we can get more young people to go there, especially teenagers, middle schoolers. But yeah, everything's going to be going really well. There were a few patrons there. A lot more than I thought I would see on like a week, I think I went, yeah, I went on the weekend. So that was really cool. But yeah, it did make me think about a lot. And maybe this is something we can put in a future conversation with the recreation, around like how we can get more youth in there.
During the, during the week, in the after-school period, they do get a lot of traffic.
Oh, they do, okay. Oh, cool.
Less so on the weekend.
Okay. So I went on a time when they're not there. Yeah, I thought it was really good. And I'd love to see even their selection grow a little bit. It was really cool to see a lot of new books. I thought that was a cool investment. Yeah.
I haven't gotten a chance to check out any libraries recently.
Yeah. Okay. I know this month is Black History. Are there any other libraries? I haven't been to any. Are there any other libraries that they do something for Black History?
There's a display currently up at the Westlake Library with books and flyers and things like that.
Do we have anything else for the community, like in the library, like?
Like an event?
Any event? Okay. How can we make that happen next time?
We, we have actually had events for Black History Month at Ceremony Library. We can talk to our, our cultural arts planner, Leslie, who you met, about maybe branching out and maybe having a speaker or some kind of event. Was it last year or the year before? A screening in honor of Black History Month of a movie whose name escapes me.
It was a war film?
It was a war film.
Red something?
Oh, Red Something. Anyway, so that, that was part of the Black History Month program. We did do it in conjunction with the library at the library. We can certainly visit that again for next year.
It would be nice, or maybe drumming.
I know, you know, we struck Iron is Hot, there, there was a lot of enthusiasm generated on Saturday, and there's a lot of people that already want to get together to start planning for next year. So I can plant the seed that maybe rather than just having one event in the cafe, maybe we can have a speaker or a film or some other cultural kind of celebration at one or more of the libraries.
Even like, even like, like something around our youth.
Yeah, like an open mic or something.
Yeah.
Library.
Yeah.
Exactly. You know, that's a good idea, Lauren.
I like that.
So it'll be nice if we have that open mic. On communication, prakapie, communication, what the Madam President would like is the Brown Act training, meeting with all the commissioners and council members, you know, what topics we would like to, or what topic strikes you, or do you have in mind to kind of throw in if, you know, so like preparing yourself when that meeting with the commissioners will. So that's something we can later on start thinking about it. Community involvement, I'll go first, since I just have one. Well, I went to, to the Black History that was done over there. It was amazing. It was, you know, I was, the, the crowd was really good. But what I missed is I didn't see a lot of youth. You know, there was a good group of people. The food was good. And they have, I feel like people come together and, and share their, their loved ones. I think, what's her name? Alice? What's, what's the lady's name? The one that spearheaded the whole thing?
Leslie.
Leslie.
Leslie Perry.
She did a wonderful job.
Leslie Burgess.
And all the workers over there. And thank you, Mr. Curran. That was my first event. I would love to go again.
That's cool.
To see. It was beautiful. And the day was beautiful. It was, it was a beautiful day. So they even have little shops going on in one room for people to go check out books and whatnot.
That's cool.
And there were entertainment. It was, it was beautiful. Good, good turnout. That was it I've been through, been to in the community.
Thanks. No updates for me.
Okay. So upcoming events, we have flyer. March 4th, there is an event with guest Donna O'Dena Simpson will be there to talk about creating comics and do a little workshop. She will be showcasing her Phoebe and the Unicorn books. It's a good event to go to. Share the Word. Okay. Fundraising. And that will bring us to our DCPLA, Victoria, to speak.
Hi, thank you for having me.
Hi.
Hi.
Hello.
Fundraising, speaking of which, we are very excited.
At the last city council meeting, we were able to pass along a grant for $25,000 that we got from the Carl, Carl Geller and Berta Celia Geller Foundation to go towards the public use computer upgrade. So that was the biggest grant, single grant that we've ever gotten as the DCPLA. So I think that was noteworthy and very exciting. And we took a nice photo at the end.
Congratulations.
Yeah, thank you. The next thing is the St. Patrick's Day event that we mentioned on March 12. And I brought, those of you who are members already should have gotten your invitation in the mail already. But I brought along copies just in case, because I don't have, especially Alexander, I don't, I don't know if you guys have a way to get something. I don't have mailing addresses for members, so.
I don't have his address.
Is there any way to get him? I mean, he's going to be at school. He probably can't go. But I wanted to make sure that the whole board was invited. Taylor, do you have a way to sort of, okay, thank you.
Thank you.
And we're also currently working on our book sale, which we are graciously have been allowed to use a space at Westlake Shopping Center. They're not charging us rent for the space just for the utilities. So that's huge, because I, I really wanted to have a prominent spot for that. So it's going to be the weekends of April 18th and 19th, and 25th and 26th. And we'll have the space the whole month of April, because we need to spend several weeks sorting and setting up, and then afterwards breaking it down. We're trying. We're trying to figure out what to do with the books that are unsold at the end. We've, you know, we've had, you know, like we did it through somebody before, but it's, a lot of times they end up just recycling them. So we're in contact with some other libraries to see if we can figure out a good way to put the books somewhere to good use, because we don't have a lot of storage area and we only do the book sale every other year, so. But I'm really excited about that. I think it's going to be great fun. If any of you have book donations and or know anyone else, it would be awesome if I could get them after we have the space on April 1st so that we could just, I can take them right over.
I have a couple.
But if you have things that you're, you know, you're really ready to unload, I can always pick it up and just hold on to it.
Hard to let go, but I gotta let go.
I know, it is, it's hard, especially children's books. Apparently those move really well, so, you know, we're hoping to get lots of donations. I already have many boxes of books, but I think we can't really have too much, other than the fact that whatever doesn't sell, we have to pay somebody to take away, so that's again, you know, if anybody has any leads on what can we do with leftover books, that would be great. And yeah, that's, that's really the main things that are going on with us right now. Thank you so much.
Thank you so much, Victoria.
Thank you.
Okay. Announcements and communications, so there's no announcement. Okay, so agenda for next meeting?
Can I sneak in a couple of announcements before we do the agenda?
Oh, I'm sorry. Okay, go ahead.
Couple of quick ones. Reminder that Daly City Centennial is coming up. First Daly City Library from the city opened up on April 20, 1920, so we will be celebrating 100 years this year, and we will commemorate that on Friday, May 1 with a celebration at the John Daly Library. We have an author lined up, a children's author named Karen Beaumont will be our headline attraction, but we'll have some historic library photos on display and we'll be celebrating 100 years of Daly.
What time, Mr. Corrin?
In the evening, do we have a time? 6:00 PM on Friday, May 1, John Daly Library. And also of interest, and I'll probably repeat this again, this, that announcement and these others at our next meeting because we will meet again in March, but just a reminder that April will be National Poetry Month, and we'll probably celebrate that in some form. And then National Library Week will be proclaimed the second week in April, so we have a couple things lined up in the coming months. The Centennial Celebration, National Poetry Month, and the National Library Week Commemoration. And usually for National Library Week, each branch does something to kind of highlight all the good things that libraries offer for communities. And there's, I saw a flyer for an event coming up. This one. Yes, so also we have another children's author coming to the John Daly Library on Wednesday, March 4, which will be before you guys meet again, and that is author Dana Simpson. She's a, I'll read straight from here, she's an award-winning cartoonist, writer, and illustrator of the Phoebe and her Unicorn series, and she'll be at the John Daly Library to talk about her books and teach artists some of the basics of comic creation. So again, that is on Wednesday, March 4, 6:00 PM at the John Daly Library. You can meet the author and listen to her talk, talk about Phoebe and her unicorn in the series.
Okay, well, thank you.
That's all I have.
Okay. Anything else? Okay, let's have agenda building for next meeting. So.
Did we end up looking at those policies at the last meeting?
Yes, we did.
Okay, cool.
I think we approve it.
Okay, awesome.
We haven't got, is that updated already on the website? The new policies?
Yes.
Okay.
Thanks for doing that, Chila.
Thank you. I printed out all the policies. I have a binder for it, so I just want to make sure I have the updated, the updated one or throw that away. Okay, so it's up already, so we can just get it from there.
I'll get the new one, too.
Okay, so we keep, I'm new to this. We keep the, we'll visit again the, the reading with the trustees.
Because we wanted to do it every month, right?
And then the advocacy and then with the commissioners, the Parks and Rec, to see what they are, the finalize and the logistics of it later on. I think that's it.
Yeah.
That would be it. And then if there's anything else, maybe Madam President will shoot you an email to see, yeah. She'll be more likely be the one. Okay. Public comment?
We all want.
Well, well, thank you for being here and the gentleman was looking for where the meeting was held at, so I could thank you as somebody, but they weren't aware that it was over here. So we thank you for being here and listening to us promoting libraries. That is our meeting. Anything else?
One last quick announcement, I'm sorry, it has nothing to do with libraries, but we're all one big happy family. This coming Saturday, February 22, is a crab feed at the Dolger Senior Center.
Oh, is it now?
It's at noon on Saturday. There are a handful of tickets left, which is why I'm announcing, hopefully it will be a sellout, so if anybody's interested, anybody that's here tonight can talk to me if anybody is listening to this at home or hears about it, and they can call our main office at 650-991-8001. The cost is $50 for members of the supporters, the nonprofit group, $55 for members of the public. It is the most affordable crab feed in the Bay Area, as far as I know, and it's, they're very generous with the crab. I go every year and it's a good time and good cause. Okay, that's it, I'm done with my commercials for tonight.
Thank you very much. Okay, meeting adjourned, 6:37.